Good morning and welcome. My name is Kirsten Langhorn and I am the owner of Langhorn Custom Homes and the 2021 Chair of the Loudoun Chamber of Commerce's Public Policy Committee. It's my pleasure to welcome you to our virtual policymaker series event, Board of Supervisors Breakfast. This event is traditionally held at one of Loudoun's premier conference centers, but today I want to thank our data center community for enabling our virtual gatherings until we can meet together and get in person, hopefully soon. This past year was a historic one for the world, for Loudoun County, and especially for you if you were a member of the newly elected 2020 Loudoun County Board of Supervisors. As we shake off 2020 and begin major preparations for recovery and a recommitment to priorities in 21, our board leadership may be facing one of the most impactful years in the history of Loudoun as we focus on recovery from the pandemic and in the economy. Join us as we receive an in-depth look from members of the Board of Supervisors leadership on major decisions that will be affecting Loudoun County for generations, including approval of the unmet housing strategic plan, mass vaccine distribution, reopening and economic recovery, and the metro extension of the Silver Line. One housekeeping note before we start, please feel free to share your thoughts about this conversation using our hashtag LCCCpolicy. That's L followed by three Cs. Please remember to also tag @LoudounChamber. I would also like to let everyone know that we will have Q and A after we hear from our esteemed panel. Therefore, if you have questions, submit them in the Q and A box. Provided we have time, we will get to as many questions as we can. Next, I would like to recognize our wonderful sponsors. Today's event and our entire policymaker series would not be possible without the generous support of our sponsors. First, a huge thank you to our signature series sponsor, Anova Loudoun Hospital, and our spotlight sponsor Bowman Consulting, who we'll be hearing from in just a little bit. Please join me in recognizing our advocate sponsors for the 21 policymaker series, and they are Backflow Technology, Bank of Clark County, BCT, the Communities Bank, Northern Virginia Community College, and Toth Financial Advisory Corporation. Please join me in thanking our 2021 policymaker series advocate sponsors. We really, really appreciate you. I would also like to recognize our 21 enterprise sponsors for their invaluable support. They are Community Foundation for Loudoun and Northern Fakir Counties, Dominion Energy, Jamelia Research Campus, and Telus. Please join me in thanking our enterprise sponsors. It is now my pleasure to recognize the chamber's 2021 business partner, the Economic Development Authority of Loudoun County, and our 2021 community partner, the Loudoun County Department of Economic Development. Also, please join me in thanking our media sponsor, Loudoun Now. Now I'd like to introduce our signature sponsor, Kelly Stevenson, RNMSN Special Projects Manager with Anova.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for having me. It's an honor to be here on behalf of Anova Health System. Anova's mission is to provide world-class healthcare every time, every touch to each person in every community we have the privilege to serve. With the onset of the COVID-19 pandemic, this year has proven to be a challenging one for all. But what hasn't been a challenge is being safe at Anova. At Anova, safety has always been a part of our culture. Really, it's the foundation of everything that we do, and we've been prepared. Being prepared means daily meetings to strategize and share information. We continue to follow CDC guidelines and are committed to keeping our patients, our team members, and our community safe. We share resources like PPE, ventilators, and team member resources across the end of the health system. Our emergency rooms have implemented additional safety precautions. We have started screening patients outdoors upon arrival. And at Lansdowne, we've reconfigured the use of our space in order to separate our respiratory patients. We have encouraged patients with non-respiratory illnesses and injuries to visit our Ashburn and Cornwall locations for the emergency care they deserve. Within the hospital, we've added additional negative pressure rooms as well as evaluated and optimized units across the hospital in order to accommodate additional COVID patients. During this pandemic, it is important to keep our patients and communities safe from preventable diseases. Delaying routine care such as surgeries, mammograms, colon screenings, vaccinations, or well baby exams can have negative consequences. We assure you that it is safe to visit your physician and hospital at Anova to receive the medical attention that you need. For our future safety of our community, we are proud to share that we have administered more than 118,000 COVID-19 vaccines since mid-December. We look forward to the day that this pandemic is behind us. But until then, whether you come to Anova for routine care, surgery, emergency care, or COVID-19 care, you're always safe at Anova. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. It's my honor now to introduce Supervisor Matt Laterno. Supervisor Laterno was elected to represent the Dulles District on the Board of Supervisors in November 2011 and re-elected in 2015, receiving over 70% of the vote, the largest margin of victory of any elected official in Loudoun County with a contested race. He also, he was also re-elected in November 2019. Supervisor Laterno led the effort to expand and restructure Loudoun County Economic Development and implement a new international business development strategy, which resulted in a major increase in commercial business development. He also has been a strong advocate for transportation projects such as the widening of Route 606, the expansion of Loudoun County Parkway, and the Metro Silver Line extension to Loudoun. Supervisor Laterno serves as the Chairman of the Board's Finance, Government Operations, and Economic Development Committee, which oversees county services, finances, and economic development efforts. Thank you, Supervisor Laterno.
Thank you, Kirsten, and thank you to the chamber and to all the sponsors that allow us to be with everybody this morning. It's a beautiful snowy morning here in Loudoun County, so I guess it works out for us that we're all virtual today. You know, there was a longstanding ad campaign for an insurance company a few years ago that had the tagline, "Life comes at you fast." And there's been no time that that's been more true than the past year, both for the Board of Supervisors and for me. In my case, life came at me fast in the form of a baseball right into my eye while I was coaching my son's team. And the effects of that, five months almost to the day later, unfortunately, I still feel every day with the lack of vision here and the nerve damage that continues. But we're working through that, and I appreciate the support from everybody in the community to help me during that recovery. It was certainly a scary thing. Appreciate the support of the county staff and my family as well. For the county as a whole, I really couldn't be more proud about how we've responded to the COVID-19 pandemic. I'll get into some of these details, but our folks really have come together. And in a way, as the county administrator says, we're almost running two different operations. We're running our normal county government, and then we have a whole separate COVID-19 operation that includes our vaccine site, all the things that we're doing to keep our employees and the public safe, and all of our frontline employees who are dealing with this every day. And it really is extraordinary the way that we've been able to come together, get all those things set up very quickly, and I think make some financial moves that really have paid off for us. I'm going to touch on a couple of my priorities for this year and ongoing. As Kirsten said, I am the Chairman of the Finance, Government Operations, and Economic Development Committee, so I'll focus a little bit on some of those issues. I do want to start with transportation, though, because that's always been one of my top priorities on the board, and in many ways, it's why I first got involved. We have still a over $3 billion capital program. About 37% of that is devoted to transportation. We're making a lot of progress. Every year I come and report to you about some of the various projects that are ongoing, and it's nice to see some of those now getting over the finish line. I do want to address a bigger problem that's sort of cropping its head up now as we progress with our capital program, and that's our ability to get really big projects done. There are kind of three in particular that I'm referring to. One of them is the Route 7 widening project in the western part of the county. And then two are near and dear to my heart, the Route 50 Collector Road from Tall Cedars Parkway to Route 28, which is an important bypass in the 50 corridor, and the Loudoun County Parkway and Route 50 interchange. That particular project is several hundred million dollars. And one of our challenges is just how does a locality like ours fund something like that that's just so big? And it's pretty clear we're going to need the state's help with that. But the state's system, which is called SmartScale, is just not set up to really address those type of issues and those type of mega projects. And so as a result, this year in the SmartScale process, we've actually received a recommendation for no funding whatsoever, despite having the highest ranking project for congestion relief in the entire Commonwealth of Virginia. And that's because of the size of the project submissions that we have. So that's a real issue. It's something that I've already sort of been personally engaging with the Secretary's Office in Virginia, and I know my colleagues will as well. We're going to have to figure out a way to deal with that. On the good news is, thanks to a federal tiger grant, we finally have North Star Boulevard under construction as a major north-south connection from Route 50 to Brambleton. We have our Cola Boulevard being constructed and hopefully opened this year as a bypass for Route 50 up to Loudoun County Parkway, and that's another major piece that's coming in place for the southern part of the county. And so I'm really focused on how do we get these other projects moving, especially that 50 Collector Road, because that really will take traffic off. Obviously, with the pandemic, we've had some relief, and we're not hearing the traffic congestion complaints. But we know that when people do start returning to work, those things are going to crop back up. We continue on the 50 project to work with the Airports Authority and with Fairfax County for, to make progress from a planning standpoint on that. We did have to cut various segments of Braddock Road widening in the southern part of the county because of the lack of funds available to Northern Virginia Transportation Authority because of some of those pandemic-related reduced expenses. So there's going to be some real pressures and some real challenges that are coming in that area. I want to touch on transit and metro. As you know, I'm one of the two principal board members on the Metro Board of Directors representing Virginia. And that's been, I had great timing. I joined in February of last year, not knowing that we were about to engage in our seeing our ridership cut by 87%, and thus our revenues. So that's been a real challenge for me. Some weeks I spend as much time working on metro board issues as I do county board issues, and I spend a lot of time on both, but it's been a real challenge. We do have now a plan in place for fiscal year '22 that the board is discussing. I know what everybody cares about here is Silver Line Phase 2, and that's actually not metro, that's the Airports Authority. And that project is actually 99% complete from a heavy construction standpoint. But there are some significant lingering issues in the quality control areas. And so Metro's been working with the Airports Authority as well as the contractors to try to address those things. In the meantime, there are some of my colleagues in the Metro Board that would prefer not to fund the opening of Silver Line Phase 2 when it's ready as a cost-saving measure. I'm hopeful that we'll be able to overcome that. We do need the community's support in the metro budget process, which is just beginning, to help with that. I can tell you that your Virginia board members are going to fight tooth and nail for that and make sure that when it is ready, it does open. When will it be ready? If I had to offer a guess, I would say sometime in the fall of this year. I know that keeps getting pushed back a little bit, and it's just based on the progress or slow progress that's being made between all the different entities involved. In the meantime, from an operating standpoint, where we're sort of have the decision point is whether we fund the full system using all the money that's been available to us from the federal government upfront. If we do that, we will actually run out of money in January and be facing major service cuts again. However, there may be more money coming from the new administration and from Congress, and we're tracking that. We'll have to make a decision on that in March. So that's kind of your update. Locally here, we're doing a great job being ready for when metro starts. We have new routes planned for our transit system to bring folks to those metro stations and help spur some of the development we're so excited about. Speaking of development, I couldn't be prouder of the work that our Department of Economic Development has done to really shift from an entity that was focused on business development to business survival. That's really where we've been since COVID happened. We started the COVID-19 Business Interruption Fund. I think we were one of the first local governments to have a program like that. We ended up giving out more than $12 million in grants, financial support for nearly 2,000 businesses, and that was a big help to them. We also provided outdoor seating grants for some of our restaurants so that they could convert and be ready to serve the folks who are trying to make a living in that field, which is very tough. They created the Loudoun is Ready, Take Loudoun Home, and Work in Loudoun initiatives to help support small businesses. Despite what we've seen with the pandemic, and this really is incredible, we still saw almost $7 billion in new commercial investment, almost $5 billion, a million square feet of new commercial real estate, and 3,500 new jobs created and existing jobs retained. And as we look at unemployment, we certainly saw a spike during the pandemic, but we're actually now back down to 3.6% unemployment. It's not quite as low as it was before the pandemic hit, but it's extremely low. And it's really a testament to the business community itself and the resiliency of that community, as well as the work that DED has done to support that work. We have many great opportunities around those metro stations. I know you don't hear a lot about some of the development discussions that are happening there, but I want to assure you they are happening. That has not stopped despite the pandemic. There is still great interest in developing the areas around that metro station, and the county is working hand-in-hand with some really exciting folks about those projects. And hopefully, we'll be able to share that with you in the coming years as those come together. One thing I do want to flag that's going to be a discussion for the Finance Committee this year is tax policy. So we are now projected in FY '22 to see an uptick of almost $200 million in revenue coming from our data center sector, which is on the surface certainly a wonderful thing, and we're incredibly appreciative of the investments that our data centers are making in Loudoun County to make us the strongest market in the entire world. But that will bring the total revenue up to $586 million for the county from that one single source. And that does concern us a little bit, because you just don't want to be that reliant on one particular source of revenue. So obviously, diversifying our economy, continuing to bring in businesses of all stripes, whether that's aerospace or biomedical or others, is going to be very important. But we also may need to look at some of the ways that our tax policy is set up overall to try to address those issues. We don't want almost a third of our revenue coming from that one single source. So speaking of revenue, we are now getting into our budget process at the county. The proposed tax rate from the county administrator is $1,005 per hundred in assessed value, which is 0.3 cents less than the current rate. We saw some interesting things happening with assessments this year. Residential market in Loudoun is extremely strong. Residential assessment growth was 7.6%. However, commercial dipped, and it's at 3.5%. And that's really a direct result of the pandemic. As a result, we have a big gap between the residential equalized tax rate, which is the tax rate by which the tax bill itself is flat for folks, and that's 0.975 for residential. Well, it's $1,805 for commercial. So commercial tax bills are likely going down. Residential are probably going up, almost no matter what the board does. It's a little bit concerning, in particular in a few areas. I'll just flag the fact that the hotel industry itself saw an assessment dip of 62%. And we also saw some significant decline in residential, in commercial strip center, shopping center type of products. And those, you know, those segments are struggling. We're going to have to watch that. We're going to have to help them as much as possible. The proposed budget from the county administrator includes about $12.5 billion to fund employee pay increases, 3%. Merit and step increases, about $6 million for new facilities that were in the CIP. Does include $1 million for collective bargaining for county employees. That's not something that I support, but it's something that the board has voted to do. We can perhaps in the Q and A have more discussion about that if folks want to ask. But in any event, that's there. And then also an increase for Loudoun County Public Schools of almost $97 million. Also something, I think that there's going to be some considerable discussion about, given the overall situation. Finally, on the capital side, the proposed CIP is about $3 billion for the six-year period. As I said, transportation's going, maintaining at about 37%. Now, in the last couple of years, we've been talking about how the amount that we're spending on schools has been going down. What you see over the six-year period is actually it starts to dip back up again, actually moves up again. It's not so much driven by new schools as much as it is renovations of existing schools. And we start to get into a cycle where that becomes a major, a major source. So speaking of all that data center revenue, one way for us to potentially utilize it is to make up some of the shortfalls in the capital budget as one-time expenses. And that's something that the board is looking at and discussing. But I think I about hit my time here, my allotted 10 minutes. But as I said, I'm really proud of the way that the counties responded. I've enjoyed working with my colleagues on this Board of Supervisors. It's a good board. I think everybody is doing their best to help get us through, and I look forward to taking your questions later.
Thank you, Supervisor Laterno, and it's so encouraging to hear those positive comments. Next, I am pleased to introduce Supervisor Mike Turner. Supervisor Michael Turner was elected to represent the Ashburn District on the Board of Supervisors in November 2019. He serves as the Chair of the Board of Supervisors Transportation and Land Use Committee and represents Loudoun on the Northern Virginia Transportation Commission. He also serves on the Fiscal Impact Committee. Supervisor Turner is a 1973 graduate of the U.S. Air Force Academy and a former command pilot with more than 3,500 flying hours as both an air rescue helicopter pilot and a fighter pilot. A Desert Storm veteran, he served on the U.S. Central Command Staff before and during the war. Turner's file assignment was on the Joint Staff in the Pentagon in support of the Chairman of the Joint Chiefs of Staff from 1993 to 1997, where he worked in the Strategic Plans and Policy Directorate. Supervisor Turner, thank you.
Thank you very much, Kirsten. I really appreciate it, and it's an honor to be here. I really enjoy this event every year at the chamber, and I appreciate being here again. Very quickly, because my time is limited, I'll just recap some of the things that we've done on the Transportation and Land Use Committee and that are related to land use and some other initiatives that have evolved out of those. And in rough chronological order, my first action when I got onto the committee, we had, I was really interested, I'm a cyclist, and I was really interested in our Linear Parks and Trails program. It was a relatively young program. Loudoun County has enormous tourism potential through its parks and trails. The WOD is sort of the trail spine of the county, if you will. And to the extent that we can spin off trails, multi-use trails, and hiking trails, and equestrian trails off the WOD, it's just a wonderful opportunity. And so I looked at that, and I met with the Parks and Rec team and the Parks, Recs, and Open Spaces Board and said, "What are we working on?" They had a consultant study that was laid into the Capital Improvement Program for fiscal '22 for $350,000. And I asked some questions, and ultimately, the board voted to have that used fund balance and have that moved up into the current year. So that consultant study is well underway now. We were briefed last night at the T-Lock Committee last night on the update on the Linear Parks and Trails program. It's very exciting. We're talking about a signature project up the Broad Run, across the Hulk Atomic Heritage Trail, down Goose, and then across the WOD of 18 miles, which would be a signature project that we could all really be proud of here in Loudoun County. Next, we tackled, right before the pandemic hit, we tackled transfer development rights and purchase of development rights programs. The PR program had been, existed in Loudoun and then became more abundant, just kind of was stagnant. We'd never actually pursued a transfer development rights program, so we asked staff to investigate those two. The findings essentially were, a TDR program is possible. It's going to require a comprehensive plan rewrite, and it's a lot more extensive. Additionally, with the rewrite of the 2019 comprehensive plan, we largely already gave away our density in the east. So normally, in a transfer development rights program, you transfer from sending properties in your less dense areas in the west, in western Loudoun, in our case. And then the eastern Loudoun developers buy those development rights. It's a private transaction to increase density in the east. But we had already increased density in the east with the comprehensive plan. So we asked staff to take a look at the possibility of a transfer of development rights in the west for commercial floor area ratio in the east. On the assumption, my estimate was, I got very interested in data centers right after I came on board, and data centers I projected a year ago were going to go up. We were running out of land, and I just felt that floor area ratio was going to be a hot commodity in the data center area. So I started focusing on that. In fact, that has occurred, but the TDR program really looked to be more expensive in time and effort in to develop that program. For what we weren't sure, it was still a pretty theoretical trade-off of development rights for FAR. And so we kind of put that on the back burner. But the purchase of development right programs, on the other hand, was fairly easy to do. And there's a feature within a PDR program, I believe it's called Purchase and Retire, which is very similar to the, I'm sorry, that, yeah. The purchase development rights program is easier to do and quicker to do within the planning processes. And so staff is in the process now of restanding up the purchase of development rights program. We're very excited about that. And I just, I'll touch on that a little bit more briefly. An innovative use of it might be for, there's an issue around clustering in the west, that if you cluster, you can increase density in the west for certain neighborhoods. But the evolution has been that it's using up prime agricultural soils. One of the things we might be able to do with the PDR program is allow small landowners, usually it requires 40 acres to do a PDR and make it cost-effective, allow smaller landowners to do conservation easements, and then use PDR funding to pay for the process of obtaining the conservation easement, and possibly also step up their tax benefit from the conservation easement to market value so that it becomes irrelevant whether they develop or just put their land in a conservation easement using PDR funds. So that's a real possibility. Next on the docket, we had started working with the Zoning Ordinance Action Group. And as we were working with the ordinance, the Zoning Ordinance Action Group and county staff and the Planning Commission, an idea began to evolve where, having talked to all of them, I looked at the Planning Commission's mission, and it's identical to the ZOAG. Additionally, all the ZOAG members were appointed at large. And so it was very developer-heavy, which is not, that's not a big deal. I mean, that's the principal stakeholder in zoning. But we really wanted to focus more on, rather than just at-large appointments, which were largely personality-driven by individual supervisors, to establish a new template of a stakeholder representation. And I was on the Stakeholders Committee for two years, so that template worked for me. And so we began to look at it and also to align the organization under the Planning Commission and reporting to the Planning Commission with a specialty on the actual zoning ordinances and particularly the zoning ordinance rewrite, which is ongoing. So we proposed to redesign the ZOAG. We've changed it and called it the Zoning Ordinance Committee, made it a committee of the Planning Commission, still appointed by the Board of Supervisors. But now each position on the ZOC, as we call it, is a stakeholder position. It's a functional position. And those organizations are responsible for nominating people to fill those organizations. It's a lot more objective and less personality-driven. Next up, Chair Randall had initiated a number of environmental initiatives in the last board, and we saw an opportunity to really put those into place. And so she asked me to take a look at how we would do that. And I, we passed a motion to create a working group to be facilitated by a supervisor designee of her choice. She asked me to informally work with that working group. So we developed a number of initiatives, and a few months ago, we passed a number of motions. We passed a motion to update the County Energy Strategy, which is a nationally award-winning strategy from 2009 that had not been updated. So that's now being updated. There is a program called Community Choice Aggregation, and I'll touch on this now and then get talked to more here in my comments about data centers. But effectively, it allows a community to aggregate and hire a community service provider as an intermediary who buys sustainable energy on the sustainable energy market and then sells it to the county aggregated buyers. It's called municipal aggregation or community choice aggregation. I wanted to see if that was possible in Loudoun County because of the enormous energy consumption of data centers. And so we passed a motion to hire a consultant to examine that and come up with a possible plan for community choice aggregation in Loudoun County. We passed a motion to coordinate our efforts to establish a solar power purchase agreement program whereby all county buildings could enter into power purchase agreements for solar and sustainable energy power on our county buildings. We passed a motion to examine the county fleet We passed a motion to examine the county fleet again with the eye towards moving towards all electrical vehicles. And so there, it was a whole host of environmental issues. And then the final one was, we passed a motion to establish an environmental commission. I was, I'm pleased to say that that just passed this past Tuesday night in final form. It has fifteen stakeholders. Again, we're following the model of the Z O C. And then two permanent standing committees, one on sustainable energy and one on natural resources, conservation and protection. And that committee, well, the majority of the two standing committees have to be permanent environmental commission members. But they can also tap into subject matter expertise, technical expertise to augment their specific mission in the committees. Those members also have to be approved by the board, but that will reconstitute both the commission and the two standing committees every two years. And they are on four-year terms with the two-year half and half staggered terms. The last point on data centers, the reason I bring this up is because data centers are about power. Power cycle is power generation, transmission and power consumption. And as I got to learn about data centers, because I was, I was focused on the, from a land use perspective, I read Data Frontier Magazine, it comes out a couple of times a week, I think. And what I realized is the market mechanism is driving the, the user end down to almost a one-to-one ratio. They measure power usage utilization effectiveness, P U E, as megawatts in versus megawatt use for data. Right now, the world standard is probably about one point six. That is about a sixty percent overhead of, of wasted energy that comes in the front door of a data center globally. In the United States, that's probably about one point three. And one point one five and lower is not uncommon for Loudoun County data centers. We really are on the cutting edge in data centers in terms of consumption. So the market mechanisms are driving to an environmentally conscious solution. Transmission is owned by Dominion, so the real thing that we can influence is sourcing. And that's when I started getting interested in community choice aggregation. If we can give the data centers a sustainable source, then they can begin to use sustainable energy and they're anxious to do that. I, I see Kirsten just popped up, so I know my time is probably out two minutes ago. Really quickly, we are the data center capital of the world. No question, we are mentioned to Data Frontier Magazine every single issue. If we can create cutting-edge community collaboration in all aspects, particularly with sustainable energy, we can really change the world with Loudoun County data centers. So it's a very, very exciting opportunity and I look forward to taking your questions. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Turner. Now, it is my pleasure to introduce Mark Baker from Bowman Consulting, one of my favorite people in the community. Take it over, Mark.
Thank you Kirsten. My name is Mark Baker. I'm a principal at Bowman Consulting and we're privileged to be the spotlight sponsor for today's event. I would like to introduce Pat Quanti, my colleague, who's going to tell you a little bit about Bowman. So Pat.
Thank you, Mark. Good morning everyone. Thank you for being here and giving us a few minutes of your time. We're pleased to be a member of the Chamber and, and support this event. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Pat Quanti with Bowman Consulting. I oversee our Bowman Leesberg office, which is located right behind Market Station. Please stop by if you guys are in town. For you, those of you that haven't worked for, with us, we provide engineering, surveying and land plan services for projects in Loudoun County and across the nation as well. In twenty-five years, we've grown from one office in Vienna to over forty offices across the county, our country, sorry. Our Leesberg office was one of the first three established over twenty years ago. And I'm feeling old because I've been here the whole time. Generally, what we do is we design and plan everything from the ground down on a site. So a data center site or a school site, we do everything you see from the ground down. We don't do the buildings. The architects do the pretty or not pretty buildings, depending on how the project goes. So we, we start with identifying environmental resources on the site, where to locate the facilities, the roads and the parking, to the final design of all the infrastructure, roads, sidewalks, underground utilities. We're proud to have contributed to many exciting projects in Loudon where residents can live, work, play and learn. I've been able to utilize a lot of those. I've lived and worked in Loudoun County for, for thirty years. So we look forward to continuing that tradition. Luckily for, in our business, due to the nature of our work, we have successfully altered our work style to embrace the work, remote work and hybrid work models for our employees, so that they can work from home, help with their kids' schools and things like that. And we're doing so fairly successfully. So we're one of the lucky businesses that, that could make that transition. I must say though, I do miss the in-person interaction that we used to get from these types of events and look forward to having them again soon. But enough about Bowman. I'm interested in what Chair Randall has to tell us today. So Mark, please get us back on track.
Thank you, Pat. It's now my pleasure to welcome our next speaker for this morning, Chair of the Loudoun County Board of Supervisor, Phyllis Randall. Phyllis Randall was elected Chair at Large of the Loudoun County Board of Supervisors in November of twenty fifteen and re-elected in twenty nineteen. Her election was historic as she became the first person of color in Virginia history to be elected Chair of a county board. As Loudon's Chair at Large, she represents Loudon on various regional, state and national bodies, including serving as Chair of the Virginia Association of Counties Health and Human Services Subcommittee, Chair of the Northern Virginia Transportation Authority, President of Washington Metropolitan Council of Governments, C O G, and Member of C O G Board of Directors, as well as Member of C O G Human Services and Public Safety Policy Committee, and C O G Regional Forward Coalition and Member of the National Association of Counties Health and Human Resources Committee. Welcome Chair Randall.
Well, thank you, Pat, and thank you, Mark. Thank you, Chamber, for having us this morning. It, it struck me that we'll be meeting in person, we probably would have to cancel this event. So for the first time, maybe being in COVID for the first time, not terrible. So the first thing I'm going to do is set my alarms, because I'm really a stickler about keeping on time. So I'm going to set my clock. And I will also say that I hope everyone is healthy. I hope your families are healthy. I'm during this very, very tough time. I, I hope you're all taking care of yourself. So Elizabeth, please. So I'm going to just kind of talk overall about COVID in Loudoun County, what it has been for us and, and some of other things that are really important. So this board is now in the top of our second year. Of our, yeah, on top of our second year of our term. It is, in so many ways, just a fantastic board. It's a very diverse board, diversity of race, of age, of experience, of skill sets. And I am so proud to be, to, to lead this board. It's just fascinating and wonderful. Really, I still, every day, just, I'm just thrilled to be Chair of the county. Next slide, please. So this is, and I won't linger on this, but these are our committees and our subcommittees. I do want to say the Supervisor Vice, or the Vice Chair is saying, since his greetings this morning, I think he's on with us, but wanted me to send his greetings as well. I'm going to talk just a little bit about COVID in Loudoun County, because that has been the overwhelming issue, of course. So you can see there the hospitalizations, the number of cases, the number of deaths in Loudoun County. I think the important thing right now is our percent positive, that the positivity rate in Loudoun County has ticked down. We are back under ten percent. Thank God. We have been as high as eighteen percent and as low as like four point three percent. And, but just recently, in the past couple of days, we have gone back down under ten percent. The goal is to, to remain under five percent. So we're still a long ways from there, but it is getting better. Hospitalizations have gone down, cases have gone down. And unfortunately, fortunately deaths have gone down. But unfortunately, we still have lost a hundred and ninety-five of our Loudoun County friends and neighbors. Let's talk a little bit about vaccines in Loudoun County, because that's been the ongoing, ongoing issue. So we started vaccinating people in Loudoun County in December. And that was people who were our first responders, so Phase One A. Currently, we have people, and this is per the governor's order, everyone who was sixty-five and older is in Phase One B. However, and this is what's a little confusing, Phase One B is, is actually broken down into, into sub-phases. And so we get a lot of calls from people who, who were saying, I'm sixty-five years old and I haven't got a vaccination. Well, you, you, you can do your pre-screening if you're sixty-five and older and you get on the waitlist, but there's still an order, even for people who are sixty-five in order and how we may be vaccinating them. We're trying to make sure we get all first responders. We are definitely vaccinating all of our teachers and people who have serious health conditions, obviously, are being vaccinated. As of yesterday, we've had almost fifty thousand vaccines, first doses in Loudoun County, and twelve thousand people who have received their second dose. As of yesterday, all teachers, all educators in L C P S who want a vaccine has, have received at least the first dose and we started on their second dose. So if there is any question about that, we have, we are doing our educators as well. There's a federal contract with CBS and Walgreens to do vaccinations. It's been a little confusing, because the county is not part of the federal contract. That's a separate contract. Those vaccines, you can go to the next one, please, are being done in, in Lansdowne. I was hoping not Lansdowne, because the parking's so terrible, but the, the governor chose Lansdowne, because so many of our senior care facilities are near the Lansdowne area, Ashby Ponds, the Potomac Green, and of course Lansdowne Wood. So, so, so CBS, through the federal contract, is, is, is vaccinating. We also have two private, we say private vaccination pods in western Loudoun County. Now, that's really important, because those people who are being vaccinated in western Loudoun County are actually coming off of our waitlist. And so the people who sit, sit on our waitlist who are sixty-five and older and they're looking at their zip code, so that they don't have to travel all the way to Sterling, to one of our two pods in Sterling. And so that is, that's how we're doing it right now in, in, in western Loudoun County. The, the mayors in the west have been very clear, and I think they are correct, that their people shouldn't have to drive all the way to Dulles, to receive Dulles Town Center, to receive the vaccine. And so we put those two pods in western Loudoun County. Now, the important thing about vaccines to know is this. We can, in Loudoun County, easily vaccinate about seventy-five hundred people a day, a day. We are receiving through our State Health Director, when I say we, it comes through those, our State Health Director, about forty-eight hundred vaccines a week. And so we are not yet receiving the required doses we need to, to fully vaccinate all that we can. What we believe right now is, is about mid-March to early April, we'll start to see those vaccinations really, really increase. And that would be very, very good news, so we can meet the full amount that we have. Go to the next one, please. I think I've said it already. Loudon has a couple of vaccination pods in, in western Loudoun County, in eastern Loudoun County. We have one open right now. One B includes healthcare workers, citizens sixty-five and older. Also, we include postal workers, grocery store people. I mean, grocery store people have been in some of the highest risk in our, in our county, educators, transit workers. And somewhere way down the one B, the, the one B cohort are people who are called critical infrastructure, which becomes elected officials. So my colleagues on the board, unless you're Mr. Buffington, who's a police officer, or Miss Glass, who's a teacher, we haven't been vaccinated yet. And that is, and that is how it should be. We should not jump in the line ahead of other people. Let's talk about CARESAC money we received because of COVID, just for a second. In Loudoun County, we received sixty million dollars in CARESAC money. Nine million of that was used for P P E. Mr. Luttrell talked about the Business Interruption Fund. We've used over three point five million dollars to help over a thousand businesses in Loudon, if they qualify. Every business that qualified in Loudoun County actually did receive the Business Interruption Fund. We've also done something called our Rental Assistance Program. It's been so important to us that people are in the middle of a pandemic, in the middle of winter, were not out of their homes. And so we've used one point seven million dollars in support for to keep people in their homes for rental assistance, for, for funds. It's mostly gone to landlords. We've also worked, and go to the next slide, I think it's on the next slide, really hard to make sure the people who have what's called non-conforming leases, and that means you may be renting a room from somebody who is renting. That's a non-conforming lease. The CARESAC money did not allow us to use to give non-conforming leases any money. So we took fifty thousand dollars out of our general fund and, and gave it, went through the community services, the community foundation, thank you Amy Owen, to give money to people who have non-conforming leases. Again, we don't need anybody to be out of their homes in the middle of a crisis. And actually, I would just stop and say right now, thank you to all of our nonprofits who have been amazing, amazing during this pandemic. I won't name you, but my gosh, our nonprofits have been fantastic. Little bit about the budget information in Loudoun County. We were the, we're the first county that does our budget. And so when we started our budget this year, our county administrator, Mr. Hempstead, who was just the best county administrator in, in the region, bar none, because we didn't know what was coming, we froze immediately one hundred million dollars in our budget. Of that hundred million, sixty million was for the schools side, forty million was for the county side. We have seen some of our tax revenues come in. We've had our, our personal property taxes that were collected on the October fifth, real estate taxes that were collected in December. Both came in pretty strong. In fact, almost, almost exactly what it has been in, in the past. So because of that, we have been able to release some of the one hundred million that we froze. We released fifty million of it. And of the fifty million that we released, thirty million went to L C P S, twenty million on the, on the county side. We will probably see the other fifty million get released sometime around March. We just want to keep watching our tax revenues and other expenses and revenues to see how, how we're coming in. In the last minute and I have left, I want to just quickly discuss something that no one's talked about so far. And that has been the Loudoun County Census. Loudoun County had an amazing census response. We were first in Virginia. We were nineteenth in the country. We were first in, in counties over two hundred and fifty thousand people. The count, town of Levittsville was very first in Virginia as well, so kudos to them. Thank you for everyone who served on the Census Committee with me, because the census is really important. People don't really know what census money is used for, but it's used for incredibly important things. It's used for Head Start Program, Free and Reduced Lunch Program, Affordable Housing, Healthcare Service, Transportation, Rose, all those types of things is what the census is used for. And so it's really, really important. Going forward, and I don't have the time, I'm about to run out of time. Some of our things in the General Assembly that's coming forwards for us to talk about is collective bargaining. Matt touched on that. I'm happy to take those questions. Marijuana legalization in Virginia, which is not something that the county board has a choice over. We have a position, but not a choice. Matt discussed the others, Greenway and transportation dollars. But since I am eight seconds over my time, I'm going to stop now and we'll be happy to take questions from everyone. Thank you again for having me this morning.
Thanks Chair Randall. I appreciate your timer. Yeah, okay, so we have a few questions for you and then hopefully we will have some time for some questions from the audience. And audience members, if you have questions you'd like to ask, please drop them in the Q and A box and then we will call on you to ask your questions live. Okay, so our first question is for any of the supervisors who want to answer first. The county has funded numerous rounds of grants for businesses and we've partnered together on a variety of campaigns such as Loudon is Ready to help businesses access the resources they need to reopen safely. What work is still left to be done by the county to spur economic recovery? And what role do you need the business community to play in it?
So let me, let me take this one and then I'll throw it to Matt. You know, I remember being on the phone with, with Beth Erickson and Tony, and Tony Howard when we started talking about the Loudon is Ready campaign. And the, the first goal was to just do that, to make sure that our, that, that people knew that Loudoun County businesses were complying with all the things that needed to be complied with, the, you know, social distancing, the hand washing, the sterilization and all that. And so the Loudon is Ready campaign was really a campaign to say to people that our businesses are complying. What hasn't happened yet and what, and what we still see as a problem is, although we're saying it, we haven't done a good job marketing that enough to people. People are still very nervous to come out to restaurants. They will do curbside orders and that's great. But truthfully, for our restaurant workers, for our touch industry, for our hotels, our, our events planners, our, our, especially our airport and our restaurants, we need to do a better job saying that we, we are following all guidelines. The restaurant industry especially, they get checked all the time by the health department. So they're already used to having, to follow all those safety guidelines. But we're not doing a great job putting that out. And so if I would say one thing that everybody in the chamber, everybody listening to my voice right now, one, go out and support these businesses yourself. Go out and if you can tip, tip heavy. But also help us through your social media, through your newsletters, through whatever you might put out to say that our restaurant industry, our hotel industry, our touch industry overall really is doing over and above all that is required. It's one thing to have them ready. It's another thing to make sure everyone knows they're ready. And so that's what I would ask you to do if, if I were to ask. And so that's what I would ask you to do if if I were to ask for some help. I don't know if Matt and Mike had anything different to add.
No, I think for the county government, I mean, we've touched on some of the things that we have done. I don't know that there's too much specifically left related to COVID. But but I think what's important to understand is, you know, this this event is not isolated. This is a event that I think will have fundamental implications for the way people work, for, you know, just sort of how we operate. And some of those things are going to be lasting. I mean, I think the the notion of everybody getting in a car and driving to work five days a week, I think we've proven as an economy that we don't necessarily have to do that. You know, I'm used to going commuting to Washington every day. Does it make sense for me to spend three hours in a car, you know, split between my morning and evening to go to my office, to go on my computer and to do that? Now, I think we will, we still do need that human interaction and there will still be some of that. But as a county, we're going to have to adjust. And the implications for that, you know, I think are going to be far reaching. And they're going to get into zoning, they're going to get into economic development and so on. So those are the next sort of conversations that we have to have. As I mentioned, there are a couple of sectors that are really hurting. Retail in particular is really hurting and our tourism, like Chair Randall just said. They may need some specific assistance. We're going to have to think outside the box. I mean, obviously, the Dulles Town Center Mall, which is now under new ownership, is a real concern for us. And that was a problem before COVID, but it's it's now just continuing. You know, some of those sort of projects that we wanted to get off the ground, like I've had in in the southern part of the county with the Avonlea Project, very, very difficult in this environment. So those are the sort of adjustments we'll have to make. I don't think there's anything specific that we need to do related to COVID, but there will be a lot of things over the next couple of years as we figure out what the long-term implications of all this really are going to be.
And if I could just real quickly add in, just to piggyback on something that Matt said, we really don't know what the economy is going to look like after we come back out of COVID. And I think there has been permanent change. But we also have the added impact of the data center revenue that Matt touched upon. You may have seen in the base budget this year that we are assuming a business property tax revenue growth within the data centers that's very conservative. And we are taking 50% of that conservative outlook on on business property tax revenue and applying it to selected projects within CIP, and I think that's good. My question to county staff has been, but what if the the excess revenue exceeds our conservative estimate? Because the data center industry right now is going through explosive growth, 30% growth year over year right now in data centers. And I don't know that that's going to change. So there's a, there's an opportunity here to work with data centers and work with community businesses to find out how we can use that excess revenue to long-term leverage the changed economy that is going to result after COVID. So we really do have a lot of, the landscape is changing, but we really do have a lot of tools in the toolbox right now to adjust to that.
Kirsten, you're on mute, sorry.
Thanks. No, thanks. I was just saying, I'm encouraged you're all are thinking so far down the road and being so thoughtful about strategic solutions to things that we might not even see right now. Okay, my next question is about housing affordability and supporting a more robust continuum of housing. It is a priority that we all share. Many advocate, including the chamber, for a dedicated funding source attached to the tax rate as seen in surrounding jurisdictions. What is preventing Loudoun from taking this next step in housing investment?
So I'll start again and I'll then pass it to whomever would like to go next. So nothing. And in fact, in the comprehensive plan that we passed, that the last board passed last term, I guess it was what, June or July that we finally finished the comprehensive plan? I made a motion to have a dedicated source of revenue to go to the housing trust fund. And that was really important because the housing trust fund had built up $20 million, but it wasn't really being spent. And the $20 million had been built up by selling affordable housing on the market. And I always say you don't want to build your housing trust fund for affordable housings by selling your affordable houses. That doesn't make any sense. So we had to do a dedicated, have that motion and put in the comp plan. We actually have talked about a couple of things. We recently have passed two different taxes. One, a cigarette tax and that will go into effect, I want to say July, gentlemen. And two, a paper bag, a tax on plastic bags that will go into effect next year. In passing those, I did go check to see if that revenue, how that can be used and found out that a tax on cigarettes can be used, is fungible. And so we can take the the amount of money that we use to tax for a sin tax, a sin tax, a tax on cigarettes, a tax on alcohol, and use it in a fungible way. I will start to talk to the staff and to my colleagues about using that tax to go straight to the housing trust fund. You know, there are ways to to do this without having to to maybe take money out of the general fund if we find other taxing sources. And since, for me, I believe taxing cigarettes is a great idea because using cigarettes is very costly in so many other ways and and healthcare costs and other things. And so if we can find other sources of taxing, we will. And I, we haven't yet got word back on if we can use the plastic bag tax on that. I think I'm being told right now that the plastic bag tax is a little more constrained of what we can do with that, constrained to environmental issues, but the cigarette tax can be used for for trust fund. And I will say that the last board and this board too, we have done more in putting down the diverse housing stock than literally almost every board combined before us. And so it is starting to happen. We are cutting ribbons all the time on new affordable housing units. We have housing units now. Developments are up to 50% of that continuum housing start. And it's not just affordable. It's low income, it's affordable, it's workforce, it's senior housing, it's veterans housing, it's disabilities housing, it's the whole, it's the whole continuum. And that is starting to happen. I do think we are behind other counties, but we are focused on it now and we are checking up. And by the way, we have an amazing staff. Thank you, Valmarie Turner. Thank you, Sarah Etrow.
Supervisor Turner?
No, what she said.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so this is to all of you again. Last Wednesday, County Administrator Tim Hem Street released the first draft of the county budget. What are your first impressions of the budget and where do you see the biggest investment need that is not currently included or is underfunded?
Matt? Well, I'm happy to go, but I would first.
It's, I wouldn't say that I would, that I would flag anything in particular right now as being underfunded simply because we haven't really started the process of going through it that carefully yet. For me, we have a capital budget work session tonight. I submitted a lot of questions. I think there's about 32 answers that are in our packets that we got last night for tonight's meeting. So my focus has been more on the capital budget initially. I will say that, you know, I think for me personally, and there are going to be probably a variety of viewpoints on the board on this, but this to me is a year to be a little bit more conservative, simply because as good as we've gotten through COVID, we do have people out there who are struggling. And, you know, we have seen that. And COVID is something that unfortunately has not hit equally. And we have parts of our community that are still to this day have much higher positive rates. And those tend to be the lower income parts of our community. So I do have a concern about the tax rate there in light of what I was talking about, because there's that gap between commercial and residential. You know, a lot of, a lot of folks' assessments are just now hitting. A lot of people haven't seen them yet. But there's a lot of variance there. The southern part of the county, personally, my assessment went up, I think, almost 10%, 9%. So that's a pretty sizable tax increase, several hundred dollars even at the equalized tax rate. And you're seeing that across the board. So for those families that maybe have gone from two incomes to one and a half or for those families that are now paying more for childcare because of pandemic-related issues, that's going to be a little bit of an issue. So I will approach this this year. I've never been a person who has been a be-all, end-all. We have to have the lowest taxes humanly possible. No, people want and expect to receive good quality of service in Loudoun County. And there have been things that we haven't invested in as much as I would have liked over the years. And we're trying to catch up. And one of those big things has been our employees. And so I'm really glad that we did finally get through the classification and compensation process. And we have been able to fund the employee raises, including retroactively even this year, which was really important for Chair Randall and all my colleagues. So that's been a good thing. I don't want to get behind on those things, but I'm not sure this is the year to necessarily undertake major new expenditures on things that are going to drive the tax rate higher. So we'll, you know, we'll see how it goes when we get into that, that, that process, though.
Can I talk to real briefly Chair Randall on my impression? I think the big, the big, the elephant in the room is the school budget. It's just an enormous variable. I asked a question at the joint meeting last week of Dr. Ziegler, the acting superintendent. Is the budget based on hybrid learning, distance learning, or in-person learning? And he said it's based on enrollment. And if you think about that, that means it's based on 100% in-person learning, which is fine i- if we have, if we have a plan to do that. Because enrollment by definition means enrollment compared to last year, which should be in-person learning. I'm not sure that we're going to have that luxury. I would love to have that luxury, but I don't know that we are. And so the point I made is I need to see a detailed plan for in-person learning. We have a great plan for hybrid learning. I haven't seen anything about how we're going to get back to in-person learning. And I specifically asked the question, is the school budget the same regardless of the mode that we teach? And the answer was it's based on enrollment. Well, I'm sorry, I just, it's very, it strains credibility to believe that 100% distance learning and hybrid learning and 100% in-person learning has exactly the same dollar amount budget. So there's going to be some pretty major discussions around how much we're going to fund the schools this year. And it's, and admittedly, the schools are going through a real thrash and we get that, we understand that, we're sympathetic. But we really need to take a look at the school budget this year.
So I approach every budget cycle the same with not an eye to raise taxes and not an eye to lower taxes. I approach every budget cycle as what do we need to provide effective services to our constituents at the lowest possible tax rate? Whatever that tax rate might come out to be, that's how I approach our budget, budget cycle. And I think that's the right thing to do this year instead. So I won't look to do one, one thing or the other. I will look to find out what the needs are. I believe because of COVID this year, the needs maybe fall great into the human services field. We, there are a lot of unknowns about things Matt has mentioned, transportation and zoning. There's also a lot of unknowns about our mental health and stability of our of our constituents. Loudoun County has 10% of our constituents are veterans. Veterans often don't do well when they have to stay isolated as long as they've had to stay isolated. We, within three months of the COVID crisis, we received the information on abuse and neglect of children in Loudoun County, and the numbers had gone down by almost 50%, which made my heart stop because I knew the numbers didn't actually go down. It was that teachers, educators usually are the ones to catch it when kids are having issues, whatever those issues might be. And because they weren't in school, they weren't being reported. And so I believe that post-COVID, the the need for mental health and and support for substance use, substance use prevention and support, all those things are going to go up. And so I will approach the budget this year. And it's me, I'm a mental health therapist, I'll approach the budget this year with an eye to that. What do, what do our behavioral health services departments need to make sure that not just the physical health of people is okay? I mean, we can feed people and house people and clothe people, but we, but there's a whole person there. And we need to look to taking care of, to the degree that the government should, the whole person and to some, for some people, that's helping them get through behavioral health, mental health crises at that moment, especially ones that they, that were not kind of of their, of their doing. And so I will approach the budget and say, what is the appropriate tax rate to meet the 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 services of the constituents in Loudoun? And then that's the tax rate I will vote on.
I'd like to ask a follow-up question for Supervisor Turner. As a layperson who hasn't, I guess, given much thought to what happens if the school budget varies from the needs one way or the other? Could you give us a couple of sentences if you end up underfunding a school budget that if they go back fully in person with a high enrollment rate? How, how does the school then come back to you all for additional funding for that year? Is there, is there an opportunity to readdress the budget? If it is underfunded, if the reality goes back to fully in school?
It's a, that's a great question. But the question presumes we've made a mistake in the, in the initial budget allocation. That's why planning, detailed planning is so critical this year. I mean, it's always critical. And we've had a lot of turbulence within the school system. So, and I get that. But it is absolutely critical this year because we don't want to have to do a reclam and come back after the fact and say, oops, we made a mistake, we've got to come up with more money. I don't want to underfund the schools. I'm with Chair Randall and I think most of our board is. Tell us what the need is and we will fund that need. And then the tax rate will be what the tax rate is. So we need to have an accurate assessment of what the need is. That's why it's so absolutely incumbent upon the school system to say, this is our detailed planning estimate. And that will give us an idea when we cut the budget to say, well, what does this look like? Now, I, I'm not an expert at this. I've only been on the board a year, but having gone through the cycle for a year, we withheld funding last year on, as a conservative estimate to say, we don't know what's coming. And so we're going to withhold this in reserve to see what's coming. I think the more likely scenario is come up with the most likely planning variables that we can for the school budget, make our best guesses of what the appropriate school budget should be for that planning effort. And then maybe set aside a contingency fund for later on down the road to be able to release additional money. So I don't know what the mechanism to do that. But but the underlying presumption is we just really have to get the planning right on the front end so we budget the correct amount one time at the beginning of the year.
And can I just jump in really quickly just with some context? So I think what you have to understand is the schools are requesting almost a 10% increase in the local tax transfer against enrollment growth that is minimal, 2% or 3%. And actually, enrollment growth, because they lost a lot of enrollment this year, that is similar to what they were projecting last year. By far, the largest expense on the school side, just like the county side, is personnel expenses. So what they're proposing this year is raises across the board between 5.7% and 6.2%. I've already said, I think that's very aggressive for the situation that we're in. It's not what county employees are going to be receiving, which is in the 3.5% range. So if the board does reduce the request, I wouldn't call that underfunding. I would call that simply adjusting to be more consistent with what the rest of the county is doing. It's ultimately up to the school board to reconcile that, but I think that would be a place that they would look. And just, just by going to say a 4% raise or 4.5% raise, there are tens of millions of dollars saved right off the board, which is either available to reduce taxes or to reallocate into some of the areas that Chair Randall mentioned.
And if I, if I can add really quickly, first of all, you know, over the, over the course of COVID, I've had some teachers ask me would I join them in the virtual classrooms? And boy, what an experience teaching like third graders in the virtual classroom setting and teaching special ed, high schoolers are teaching. I've done quite a few and they've been really interesting. And it gets you a good, a good ideal of what educators have had to face during COVID, and it has been very tough. So first of all, thank you to all of our educators. I would say that, that there are a lot of county employees who are, who are essential employees. The ones we think of, like first responders, the people we don't think of, like group home workers, people who are working in the criminal justice system and probation and parole. Those are county employees who will probably receive somewhere between the 3, 3.5% pay raise this year. And so as much as I really appreciate our teachers and all they've had to go through this year, I also don't know that this is the year that I would, that I would, and it's not our decision. And we give a transfer to the school of money and then they make the decision what to do with it. But but my idea this year would be to have that transfer in line with county employees raises and not above county employee raises, especially since most county employees are the ones that have been essential employees during the COVID crisis. Having said that, I've done some Zoom meetings with teachers and they have been tough and interesting fun, but tough and interesting as well.
Thank you. For our last question before we get to audience Q and A, I'm going to kick this over to Victoria Melby from BCT the Communities Bank.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning, supervisors. Thank you for your time today. My question is, if you were to visualize the future of our business community and economic development in Loudoun County over the next 10 years, what is our greatest strength and greatest barrier to reach your vision of the future?
So I will start. Our greatest strength, I think, is, is that's the easiest one. It's obvious, it's our people. It is our people, it is our people in the chamber, it is our constituents, it is our people who, it, it is our small business, who, businesses who even during this COVID crisis, against all odds, have figured out ways to survive on a regular basis. I try to sit down, especially restaurant owners, I, I've sat down twice with, um, I don't know if you all know Curtis Al- Alred. He's just fantastic. He owns Delirium in, in Leedsburg. And the things that they have done to keep their employees and to survive has been just phenomenal, just fantastic. So I think our greatest strength is, is, is the tenacity of, of the people and, and then they're caring for their people. You know, if business owners who have kept their businesses open have often done it at their own expense, like taken no paycheck, come out of their pockets because they care about their people. So that's been our greatest strength. Our greatest challenges are all the unknowns that are coming, I think. Matt spoke about it a little while ago. We have no idea post-COVID what we look like. Do we, do we, do we anymore have offices that we go to? Or is it going to be all, all, or all are mostly, uh, virtual? What, uh, technology requirements are we going to have if we're going to go to an economy that is all, uh, that's going to be a very virtual platform economy? What does that mean for us as human beings who are not having as much interconnectivity and, and, and contact with people? How hard is that going to be, which could be really kind of striking? But I will also speak to something Mr. Turner said in Loudoun County, we have to diversify our, our tax base. We are very, very grateful for our data centers, both for the tax revenue, but also for the community, um, partnership that they provide. But it is not healthy for a county to have that much revenue to rely on one business. I always say there's probably some brilliant little girl in her mom's basement right now, making something, inventing something that could make data centers obsolete. And if that is true, then we're going to be in trouble in Loudoun County. And so we really have to figure out ways to diversify our economy. Retail is still important, we have to think of retail differently, reimagine what retail was. I am doing my best to keep the mall going, but it seems like other people are not. And so we have to re-imagine retail and really get very aggressive. And Mr. Riser is doing that about, um, different types of businesses. Small manufacturers in Loudoun County are welcomed and we look for those. IT businesses that are especially health-based businesses. I told my partners in Montgomery County, my colleagues over there, I'm coming after you. I'm coming after your IT health business in Loudoun County. I'm, you know, I'm going to be nipping at your heels. And so to diversify some of the, some of that economy is going to be really important to keep our economy strong.
Any other responses or?
Yeah, sure. So I think, um, I think our strengths are similar to what they are today. Chair Randall touched on our, our incredible workforce, also just where we're situated. I think you're going to continue to see somewhat of a devolution away from the model of everything being in the district, whether that's government agencies or contracting or so on. I think you're going to continue to see as the transportation network expands, as the silver line comes on board, it's more and more opportunities to kind of push. You know, Amazon HQ2, uh, in Arlington, Alexandria, we would have loved it in Loudoun and Fairfax. But what that's doing is changing those markets. And that's actually creating some challenges for the businesses that are in that direct area in Crystal City. And they're going to be looking for opportunities, uh, to move into places that may be a little bit more affordable, but still have good access. And that's where a place like our Silverline stations, uh, in Loudoun come in. So I think that's a huge strength for us. In terms of challenges, um, it, it remains infrastructure is one of them. You know, our workforce is coming from all over the place. I'm excited, obviously about metro, I'm excited about public transit, but we're, we're 520 square miles. We do have to acknowledge that those solutions don't make sense for some people, for a lot of people. Um, and so we're going to still have to have the road network as well as the bikes and trails and things like that. We've got, you know, increasing workforce coming from places like Frederick, Maryland, places like Winchester, and they're getting squeezed. And so it's going to take a lot of investment, as I kind of addressed upfront, some of these mega projects to try to unlock some of these key areas where there are choke points. That's going to be an issue for us as we grow, um, as well as workforce overall. You know, it's, it's hard to cat and keep and retain workforce. You need a spectrum. We have a lot of, uh, you know, CEO type of folks here in Loudoun. We don't have as many folks that need to staff the rest of the company. We've got to get younger with our workforce. We have to retain more of our young people and give them the type of places that they, the environments they want to live in. And we're, we're doing those things, uh, but executing is difficult, especially now in a COVID environment. So where some of the access to capital is a little bit less. So, uh, those are all the challenges we're going to have and I don't think it's a shock. But I think we're, you know, we've got to continue to make progress on those things in order to be able to grow economically over the next decade.
And, um, basically just to, to, to add just a couple of more thoughts. I absolutely agree, it's our people, but, but, um, I, I think our greatest opportunity is, uh, our greatest strength is our economic base. I mean, we're just incredibly economically viable right now in so many different ways. Just the simple, not just the diversity of our workforce, um, and the educational level of our population. And frankly, the wealth of our population, but the diversity of opportunity in Loudoun County. I mean, there's a, a, a thriving and, and continuing to thrive and growing, um, agribusiness environment in Loudoun County. And right next door, we've got Silverline coming, which basically makes us an international capital. And then you lay the data centers on top of that, which is really at the global center. The, the opportunities going forward economically are just enormous. And the challenge to me is a post-COVID economy. Nobody has any idea what a post-COVID economy worldwide is going to look like. That's just a tectonic shift in what our economic, uh, environment is going to look like. And, and, and we're going to have to be really nimble and adjust. And again, back to our strengths, Loudoun County is pretty famous for being able to adjust pretty quickly. So I, I, I'm, I'm very, very excited about it.
Well, thank, thank you all. I also want to thank all of the audience members out there who are participating in this great economic ecosystem that we have in Loudoun County. I, I appreciate the supervisors. Valuing the relationship that we all have in making Loudoun County a great place now and in the future. I'm going to turn this over to, uh, Grafton DeButz, our VP of Membership and Government Affairs, who is going to facilitate the audience Q and A. Grafton?
Great, thank you Kirsten. Thank you supervisors. We have two questions from the audience. The first one is from Scott Hamburger and the second one will be from Lynn Tadlock. I'm also keeping an eye on the clock as well. So, uh, hopefully we can get both of these questions in before we close our event today. So I am going to unmute Scott Hamburger and allow him to ask his question. Go ahead, Scott.
Very good, thank you Grafton. Good mornings to all my fellow chamber members. I can't wait until we're back in person together. And also a huge thanks to our panelists for your public service, which is very much on display this morning with your engagement and your depth of knowledge. So thank you. I do want to take Chair Randall and Supervisor Letourneau up on their invitation to talk about collective bargaining. And I would suggest that we have a lot of evidence that public sector unions do not actually serve the public well. I think we can see a lot of, uh, evidence of financial crises in municipalities and states around the country brought on by unsustainable pay and retirement packages arrived at through collective bargaining. And further, I would suggest there is not a strong correlation between public sector unions and better public services. In fact, I think there's evidence to the contrary. So my question is, from a taxpayer and from a quality of public services perspective, why do we want collective bargaining in Loudoun County?
So I'm happy to go first because Matt doesn't want collective bargaining in Loudoun County or Virginia. And, um, and I do. And a couple of things, one, I, I don't know if people realize that Virginia is one of three states, soon to be two states without, um, public service, collective bargaining being allowed. North Carolina, South Carolina, and Virginia are the only states that are left. And that will be changing very soon in North Carolina. So we would be aligned with just South Carolina. And if you look, and I look, would love to see some of your, um, data, Scott. I am a very data-driven person, but I have looked at some of the data. And if you look state to state and even county to county, you have different outcomes based on what those collective bargaining agreements look like. If you're talking about just paying benefits versus if you're talking about pay benefits, um, uh, things like discipline policy, um, that you have different outcomes. Um, and how it's set up is also makes a difference. And so I'd like to see your, your information, but I actually believe that our, our county employees are public servants. Very much in the way that we are public servants, we're public servants and Loudoun County especially. I, you know, Matt talked a little bit ago about the, um, comping class study. When I came on to the board in 2016, our, our pay in Loudoun County was, we were woefully underpaying our employees. Our, um, uh, family services department had the highest caseloads in Virginia. And they were being ridiculously overworked. We had to do a whole and, and thank, thank gracious to the last boards, Mr. Hemp Street, a whole, um, evaluation of our comping class study. We were losing firefighters. We have a very young firefighter force because we are losing them. When you spend money to train a firefighter or, 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 or a law enforcement officer, and then you lose them because they go two counties over because that county is paying them more money, that actually costs money. So, uh, we will, uh, have an opportunity to see what a collective bargaining agreement looks like. It, it, it will be a, uh, back and forth between, um, uh, the, the different shops to set up. We may do some things differently and, and because we are one of the, one of the states that would do it last, we have a lot to learn from, from states that did it well, states that didn't do it well. I can look in just one, one district over and think, see of things that I don't want to do. But I can also point to states that things that I do want to do. You know, it's really interesting because, um, I have never been shy about how I feel about, uh, this. I've said it through my campaigns, I've, I've said it all my life. I am a, my grandfather was a Pullman porter, my grandmother was IBW, my, my father was a postal worker. I was raised by unions, I believe in unions and that is where I stand. Now, how those unions work, how they are, um, put together, how a collective bargaining agreement looks. And what goes in it, that's up to the board. And I think that we have one, a strong county administrator and two, a strong board. And we will make decisions that are best for not just the unions, but for people in the county. I'd like to see your research, but let me be clear, I support collective bargaining in Loudoun County.
So as, as Chair Randall alluded to, I, I have not supported it. And this has been one of the very few issues actually that we've had kind of a party line split on, on the board. And it's good, by the way, that we don't have a lot of those issues. I think, uh, it shows that we have an independent board. I'm not going to sort of belabor the point. I think some of the concerns that I would have going forward and, and Chair Randall was right, well, these can be addressed as part of the process. But, um, I don't, we have a pay for performance system, a merit-based bonus system or, or salary scale now for county employees. And in most of the collectively bargained environments, that does not exist. Um, and I think that would be something that would be unfortunate to lose because that's something that we worked hard to create with Mr. Hemp Street. Just really over the last six or seven years. I, I'm concerned about losing some of the flexibility, uh, that you have. You know, I look back at what we've been through over this past year and some of the things that we've had to do and all of the additional steps that you would have to undertake in some types of, uh, environments like this and what others have had to do, um, to try to get there. And that to me is, is a concern. I think from a pure dollars and cents standpoint, you know, we have addressed, I mean, Chair Randall is right, we were absolutely underpaying our, our employees. And we did address that, we did create a step system for our, our public safety employees. So now from a compensation standpoint, that's sort of locked in and then you can see what that progression is. So I don't think you need collective bargaining in order to be able to get there. There are a lot of different ways to do this. You know, I'm going to, despite whatever my views are, I've said to my colleagues, I will try to be as productive as I can be in working through this and understanding what our options are. And hopefully we can maintain some of those, uh, principles that I kind of outlined to try to, uh, have as part of whatever process we do pick, uh, going forward. But I, I think it's got to be a partnership between the, the county and, and the employees and the taxpayers.
Great, thank you both. Our last question is from Lynn Tadlock. Lynn, give me one second and I'm going to unmute your microphone so that you can ask live. Actually, hey Lynn, I see there are three of you in our attendee list. So I'm going to click on one of them and see if it works. Lynn, are you there? Let me try the next one.
Wrong one, you got Bill Hazel this time.
Oh, okay. Lynn, are you there?
Oh, for two.
Last one, Lynn, are you there? All right, I'm going to go.
You got the right one.
Hey, there we go, okay.
All right, thank you. Good morning, uh, members of the Board of Supervisors. I first off want to thank you for your service. It's been my pleasure to meet many of you over the years and work with you. And I want to, uh, thank you for your leadership during a really hard time. You know, you've been very dependent during COVID on nonprofits in Loudoun County to help us get through. And I know that the county government has done a lot to try to improve their grant-making to nonprofits in, in the past. And there has been some improvement there. And what I would like to know, given the current situation and your upcoming grant-making, what are you going to do to expand the support to nonprofits? Who plan, you know, we, are you planning to increase funding in that arena? Because we now know how critical it is to have sustainable nonprofits to provide services in Loudoun County.
So I know I'm talking a lot, but I think, uh, I'll, I'll definitely take this one. So first of all, Lynn, it's, it's so good to hear your voice. I miss, I miss people so much. If you are an extrovert like me, boy, I mean, besides all the other things with COVID, this has been just so tough. So, um, you were correct, last term, we added a half million dollars to our nonprofit bucket. And we took, um, five nonprofits and gave them a, uh, made, gave them a steady source of income. Gave them a county line, uh, budget from our, from our general funds. We did that because there were some nonprofits that we were using like arms of the county. And so when people were coming for services, we were referring people to that nonprofit, yet not giving that nonprofit any, any extra money. So we took five nonprofits and we gave them a steady stream of money. And then we added a half million dollars to the nonprofit bucket overall and completely revamped. And that started with missile, the turn of the, of the turn before. And then like, we kind of took that over last term, how we do the entire nonprofit setup. It had been my plan this term, this term, to say that I want to have another half billion dollars in the nonprofit bucket. It's a discussion that we would have during the, during the, the budget. As I said, I will go through the budget process and make decisions that are best, um, for the, for the constituents, for the taxpayers. I want as low of a tax rate possible while still providing county services. Well, you are correct, the nonprofits have very much helped us provide those county services. And so I imagine that something will be added to the nonprofit fund. I don't know how much it will be. I will also say one other thing has happened. I have been making phone calls myself to people who, to individuals who I know can probably, um, contribute money. And so individuals and organizations, I won't say who those organizations, individuals are, but I have been making those phone calls to ask for, for money to be, to be, uh, contributed to our nonprofits themselves. And so literally, um, I take some time from my office and I, I kind of grabbed the list that I used when I was running for office, some of those campaign contributors and called them and say Loudoun Hunger Relief needs, needs to have, be able to buy more food or this or that. And so that's been something I've been doing from my office because I, you know, are not, we would not have gotten through this. We would, would, would have not made it, we're, we're not for nonprofits. And I, you know, I, I, I called out the community foundation, um, but there are others, our, our nonprofits that house people and feed people especially have been incredible, our nonprofits that deal with domestic violence have had, we've had so many more cases of domestic violence come in. And so all those things have happened. So the, the short answer is I believe more money will be added. I don't know how much, um, but there have been other things that, that has been coming from the fifth floor wing of the supervisors to also help with the nonprofits during COVID.
Kirsten, I saw your light, come on, give me 30 seconds. I was in nonprofits for 22 years after I retired from the Air Force. I was a fundraiser, I've written countless grant requests and I have set up grant programs. If you're a nonprofit, pay attention to the application process. I specifically met with our team, county team. The algorithms that they are using to determine how much money you get based on what you ask for are very good algorithms. But you have to participate in the process. Pay attention when we advertise grants, fill out your application, be detailed. And if you have questions, call us and ask questions because that's all we have to go on and when we make awards. Thank you.
Well, I want to thank you all for joining us today. More importantly, I want to thank you for your service to our county. Cause I know when I'm up in the middle of the night worrying about a countertop installation, you're worried about issues that are really transforming lives. So thank you. I also want to thank our sponsors again. Our 2021 policymaker series. Our 2021 policymaker series signature sponsor, Enova Loudoun Hospital, and today's spotlight sponsor. Thank you all to our policymaker series advocate and enterprise sponsors. And I just want to wish you all a wonderful day despite sleep. So have a great day. Thank you. Thank you all for joining us in the audience and we'll see you soon.